Calling it to order at 5:38?
Thirty-seven. Oh, it just changed to thirty-eight.
I know. I was trying to draw it out. I'll make a motion. We approve the regular meeting minutes of January 25th.
Second. The minutes of January 25th have been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Nope.
Hearing done. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion for debate and to be seconded for the consent agenda. And I will second that. Are there any additions?
No, sir.
Those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Appointments.
You're going to miss public input.
Oh, God.
Do we have anyone on Zoom, Josh?
Bruce, and I don't know what his last name is. W-A-Y-Z-N.
Oh, it's Bruce. Okay.
Okay. He doesn't seem to be indicating he wants to say anything, so we'll keep moving then.
All right.
First appointment is no longer needed. We received a payment today, so back on track.
Okay. So the second appointment is with the Rail Trail Advisory Committee, which is Mike Kowalwicz.
Hi, Mike.
Yeah, please. Yep, Mr. Slott, see. Okay, great. Okay, so at the last Rail Trail Advisory Committee meeting, the committee discussed sending a letter to you that would ultimately get to the city of Keene if you approved it on the town of Swansea's recommendations regarding the Keene Street State project and what the street would look like after they do their infrastructure project. So the letter I sent you guys describes each section and what option was agreed to by the Rail Trail Advisory Committee. How familiar are we with the project? It's broken into three sections. There's the Central Square section, which is where, you know, Central Square is today and the option we picked. Well, in general, the options picked are ones that promote pedestrian, bicycle, active-living type design so that you can get more of that downtown than you have today. So that's kind of in general what the three options that were picked. The Central Square option is one where the park actually grows. There's no road up on the northern side between the park and the stage. That's all pedestrian. It allows people to get to Central Square without having to cross the street if you're coming down Court or Washington, and you'll have to cross one lane of traffic at Court or Washington to get on there. It also provides parking actually at Central Square, which may be, I don't know, six, seven spaces or 10 spaces or something, but it is something. So this allows more activities, bigger events, things like that within the park. And then just south of that is what they call the mini roundabout, which is a way to manage traffic in that area, up and down Main Street, Roxbury, West Street, Court, and Washington. For Main Street, it was called the single lane multimodal, again, creating more pedestrian space, creating a bike lane, a dedicated bike lane that's protected. So promoting more of that. Of course, this major intersection, Chester Rail Trail, so allows people to wait on and off the rail trail in a safe bike lane. So it does provide that. And then the Gilbo Ave, Roxbury, Gilbo Ave Railroad Square area is a one-way street on Gilbo, and the design there is to promote more community activities on Gilbo. There's talk about a white art corridor, I think they're calling it, and also a raised, Main Street would be like a raised island to get to Gilbo Railroad Square. And that is to create kind of like a continuous path, the feel of a continuous path for pedestrians and also slow traffic down on Main Street. So that, in general, are the options. There's a lot of information online. I guess I'll just open it up for questions. If you need more, I could send you links to all this kind of stuff.
And they got a draft of your letter?
Letter, yeah. So I guess I'll open it up there and see if you guys have any questions or your thoughts are.
Yeah, especially where this has obviously become a hot topic in the big city. Versus just having the Rail Trail Advisory Committee send it out. I thought it might be something you'd want to be least aware of and/or, you know, be supportive of. So that's kind of why I normally might have just sent you a letter.
No, no, I agree, Mike. It's become a very controversial, seems like a hot topic. It's on Danny Mitchell every morning, you know, and people have opinions of what they think are like.
Sugar should not happen.
Yeah, so... But if it came from the town of Swansea, you'd have a lot more clout. If you'd like not to do it, I'll probably send a letter from me, just a resident of Swansea, which has a lot less clout, but that's what I'd do.
Well, you said the Rail Trail Committee supports this letter, right?
Yep.
So come from the Rail Trail Committee?
No, I mean, if you, the select board, decide not to forward it to the city of Keene, then...
What I'm saying is you could send it on behalf of the Rail Trail Committee from the town of Swansea instead of from the town of Swansea.
If that's okay with you guys, sure.
Is that a re-again?
I haven't given it enough thought.
Okay.
I don't listen to Danny Mitchell.
Do you want to think on it and get back to Mike next week, or...
Do you want me to send you anything? I mean, it's all out there. If you just Google, you'll find the information, all the different design options. There's even a six-minute video they came out with, I think about a week ago, that kind of summarizes things pretty nicely, pretty quickly.
Want me to send you that video again, or...
Sure.
All right.
All right.
We'll get back to you. The meeting on Tuesday before...
No questions, Sly, no questions?
Nope.
So what's the decision? I'm sorry.
They're going to think on it and get back to them next week.
I'll leave you next week?
Yeah, get back to them next week. You're going to be at Deliberate Session, of course, right?
Oh, absolutely. From Rosie?
Good man.
I got my ticket.
There you go.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Do you want to jump to Joe?
Yes.
Joseph? Join us at the hot seat.
Good evening.
Good evening. So the Winkham Hall here, we had an issue with the wet system a week and a half ago, where pumps were running and there was also a fault with the alarm system. So they came out and fixed it, but while they're here, they identified a butterfly valve that needs to be replaced. The cost of that is approximately $13.10, I believe, but then need to get an electric to do some wiring. I didn't get a... I just caught that today that the wiring wasn't included, so I don't have a court on the wiring. But I would estimate that it wouldn't exceed $300, so it all should be done for, say, less than $1,700, but it needs to be done. The other thing that's been identified, separate from this, and Mike and I have been communicating quite a bit, is the alarm panels here and the fire suppression components that hook to the alarm. So the company that made the alarm panels, they're no longer in business. They're very, depending on what the component is, they're very little if none available. So we had a smokehead go down upstairs two weeks ago, and Amor took a few days to find it, but they found the last smokehead in existence. So what I told them to do is start preparing a quote for me on what it would cost, what their recommendation would be for new panels, and what components we have that could work with the new panels and what components need to be switched out. They haven't gotten back to me yet, but I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention that sooner or later, unfortunately, I think that is going to have to be... The panels are going to have to be changed out, and whatever components are not compatible with new panels will have to be changed. It's been a non-stop problem for the last two months. Some of it was a phone line issue, some of it was just simply a phone panel. And the other issue is the programmer, the individual that really knows about this system, he's no longer in business, so it's just like the perfect storm. However, Amor is able to communicate with him when they have issues, and they've been able to work through it. But I just wanted to give the board a heads-up unrelated to this, that sooner or later, that is going to have to happen. Whether we want to or not, it depends on if we're proactive about it or are we waiting to ride it out as long as we can. But I estimate maybe at least three times, Amor's had to come out because of the issues.
Thanks for the good news. All these heads are just two wires, though.
What's that?
All these heads are just two wires.
Yeah.
So it's just the amount of resistance or whatever.
Yeah. I don't know enough of the other, but essentially, they were going to make a list of what could stay and what needed to go, and...
Probably not just us either.
No, no. And I don't have the answers as far as why that was the system that was one, but...
Okay.
To your point about the electrical, like, estimated $500, so you're kind of in the same ballpark with you, so he ends up like eighteen...
Just to exceed $2,000 on the...
Let me say.
Where would it come from?
From the Winkham Hall revolving fund.
Okay, there's enough in there.
Yeah.
Something from where?
Winkham Hall revolving.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? Hearing done. Those in favor?
Aye.
Up to $3,000?
Two.
Up to $2,000? Up to?
Not to exceed.
Under.
Within.
Got any other good news?
I don't. We want an update from DPW. Things, regardless of the last storm, we got things back to normal. It was obviously a pretty challenging storm. We had a couple pieces of equipment go down, and then obviously dealing with all the trees down was really challenging, but back to normal and everything, all the equipment is repaired and back up. So just trying to get caught up with now with all the brush down, just numerous trees. At one point during the storm, we had three trucks essentially trapped in East Swansea and couldn't get back to West Swansea without going into Keene and going all the way around. Just an example, tree down on Eden Road, tree down on Swansea Lake Road, and a tree down on Warmout Road at the same time. So there were some challenges, but thankfully we got through it. We don't have major issues.
How is the state on dealing with trees that are right on the road? I mean, next to them. There's a couple up in North Swansea I was looking at, right on 32. You could probably hit them with your plow. That's how close they are, big pine trees, and when they go down, it's going to be a big problem.
They did a little bit of tree work on Swansea Lake Road. You want to... I can meet up with you and take a look at them, and I can forward them over. Sometimes they've been great, other times, like you know, the one tree that you brought to their attention on Eden Road, that was given to them by me and by residents. It didn't seem to move until the end, but we can bring it to their attention, document it, bring it to their attention.
There's a person on the corner of Airport Road and Route 32. She asked about the tree being removed. And if you look at that tree, the next one down, you'll see, they're both right on the road, so...
I'll bring it to their attention and see if I can get a word back.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Stay warm.
Right.
Keep the heat up.
Yeah.
To Winkham Hall, to Winkham Oaks, can you... Eliminate it.
You want to jump down to new business?
Yeah.
So I provided a little charge for kind of a hyper-focused committee, but I think there's some merit to it related to the California Street, North Winchester Street reconstruction project. We're looking at reviewing some options for...
I did. I'm just curious as to why it has to be California and North Winchester versus North Winchester and California.
I guess it doesn't.
Because you corrected it from the former.
Alphabetic.
Alphabetic?
Well, just because we just did South Winchester, so if it starts with California in my mind, it's easier to keep track of, I guess.
It's not like a mandatory thing. It was just Michael's doing it. Okay, got it.
That's what Underwood's calling it.
Okay.
And in the end, we may only end up doing one or the other anyway, so it might end up changing.
It's fine. Just curious.
But the main reason I think a committee has merit is if we're looking at rearranging the traffic, and I think we want that local buy-in. So we've got some folks in mind, including the DPW director, to serve on that committee. But basically, hyper-focus, like I said, the term is for the year. Probably most of the work will be in the first month or two, and then maybe we have stuff later on that we want them to weigh in on. They can, but looking for a five-member, five-member committee for that. Two residents or property owners on those streets, and then two just from town in general.
Any other questions regarding this?
Nope. I'll make the motion. As drafted.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? Hearing done. Those in favor?
Aye.
November expenditure report went out on Monday. No major items in the... The spending in that month was a little higher than last year. I think we had a lot of paving builds that went out that month, so... But overall, it's still in good shape.
Any reason why we need to wait for six to five?
Oh, sure, we got a couple other things. So one other thing that Bill and I had spoke about, obviously he's not here, but was going to every other week meetings for February. Many chances have been fairly light, so I told him that I would bring that up for consideration.
Questions?
What are you thinking? Obviously, the seventh.
Yep, got to meet the seventh, so I would say 7/22, and then either 1st or 8th, depending on your pleasure. I know that's in March, but...
And this is... This is a change in the November and the February schedule or addition to it?
Change. 7/22?
And what day is the week of those?
Wednesdays.
Well, 7th is a Tuesday.
Yeah, I can't be here on the 8th, I was...
Right.
We already talked about that.
Yeah, so the 7th is a Tuesday, and then the 22nd is a Wednesday.
I'm confused at what you're changing then. Isn't that...
Basically, they're going to skip the one in the middle, the 15th.
Oh, skip the one on the 15th. Okay, got it.
7th is the number?
Right, so we have a meeting, a brief meeting for that.
Yep.
Okay, got it.
And then we're going to defer it to next week, but I think Chair of the EMS Advisory Committee, Steve Biddle, was going to ask you about increasing the membership to have everyone be a full member versus the couple alternates that we had talked about, but saving that for next week.
Okay.
Go ready for deliberative?
You get my text?
Yeah. Yeah, it's trouble with writing down too few words on my calendar. I didn't remember which hearing, which thing was going on tonight.
Evening.
Ken, how you doing?
Good, how are you, bud?
Oh, I may live, to the chagrin of many. Mike, how you doing?
Great, how are you?
So far, so good.
Going to see you next week at Deliberate? About...
I know you.
Yeah, good.
I'm not technically obliged to be there, but as assistant moderator, I figure I should be.
You're a good wingman. No one would say different. I think everyone present is pretty familiar, but I didn't bring the current technical plan out, so we as well... You know it because you sent it to us, but...
Yes.
We'll probably start with the introductory remarks, I think.
All right. Well, we've got, what, two public hearings, don't we?
Yes, sir.
One has to do with the West Swansea water fire precinct boundaries.
Correct.
Is there anyone present at the table or on line that doesn't have a clue as to what's going on? Does it mean that I have to read the whole thing?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. There's a list of boundary lines. And slide, can you put you on the spot?
Sure.
Exactly what this means.
Yep, basically, it's just extending the precinct from where it currently ends at the old Causeway Road, which is Eric Stanley's driveway now, further south on Route 32 to the area of 321 Old Homestead Highway where the proposed fire station was going to go. So that's the water line right now ends at Powers Generator. So obviously, it'd be an extension of that, if that's how it goes. But as far as the boundaries go, it's just catching all those properties with frontage on Route 32 down to 321 Old Homestead.
Further input from the gallery?
Who are you, sir, for the...
I'm Jim Callahan. I was a lawyer for a long time. Over in the meeting gallery, expressing support.
Okay.
Jim Callahan.
Jim? With a G?
Uh, no G. I dropped it on the way.
Okay, so how do I spell your last name?
C-A-L-L-A, I think.
And Jeremy?
Jeremiah.
Jeremiah, okay, thank you.
And this is something you're interested in, Mr. Callahan, for your housing development?
That's correct.
One lot north, correct?
Yes.
Further discussion? I did have the opportunity to speak with Bonnie Tolman, who lives within this, one of these properties, and she is not in favor of being added to the precinct. So I told her I would relay that for her.
Okay.
If somebody wishes not to be included, do they have the option of begging out?
Not really. They don't have to hook up, but...
Hook us up.
As far as within the precinct, if the boundaries are extended.
I don't think you probably wouldn't want an iron in the middle, right? That wasn't...
Right.
Will the funding come for the project?
So this is just to increase the boundaries?
Right, this is the first step, but...
Or not, there you go.
Right.
But it is a good question.
Buy your lottery tickets. Powerball's up.
I did reach out to the state with the Invest in Age funds, which are primarily focused towards workforce housing, but I did reach out and just let them know about the project and see if they knew of any possible funding. I had not heard back yet, but I did make that outreach because I know it's obviously partly within your project, so...
Would you bind it with users' fees paying for the bond?
I'm sorry?
Would you bind it with users' fees to pay for the bond?
Not really. I think that would be more like a TIF district.
Yeah.
And I don't think we've done anything like that
for the precinct.
For this, yeah.
The reason I mention this is because of Hancock, and I'm on the broadband committee. We sort of have that last mile problem. So, you know, 70% of the town, 65% is covered. So nobody wants to obligate everybody in town, but we sort of made an arrangement where if we go that route, now maybe we'll grab some of that federal one, they would just recoup it through the users. You know, it's not a tip, but it's just, you know, it's kind of an analogous situation.
I think Chesterfield...
Something to look at.
Something similar with your broadband, right?
The $10 from every bill goes toward the bond or something.
Oh, you mean how... That was for broadband service.
Right.
Yeah, that's the analogy, yeah.
Yeah.
And they actually call it the Chesterfield model.
Yes.
Because that was adopted.
Okay, further discussion? I'll close off the public hearing. Want to entertain a motion?
If I can find it.
Yeah, so this process was a new one for me. I know Sly's been involved with it before, but basically, the precinct petitions the select board. The select board hold this hearing, and then if you vote to move forward, it basically goes back to the precinct and the voters in this proposed new area to vote on moving forward. So you're basically just whether to move forward with the project or to not, basically.
I'll make the motion to move forward with adding the following properties, of which you have, right?
I'll second that. Further discussion? Hearing done. Those in favor?
Aye.
Just to record, you both are precinct voters, right?
Yeah.
So you're going to have to go to that meeting, Ken.
No, the meeting.
Oh, God. Bring lead still. Oh, jeez.
Say, next question, Mr. Chair, does this go to the, on the warrant? Or does this go to the precinct?
Well, actually, the precinct voted last year to extend it.
Right.
Yeah. So we did it at our annual meeting. Now we bring it to you, and then obviously, we have to have Keene approve it, so...
What's the time on that, Ken?
My understanding is you now have to have a meeting of the... So the select board would call a meeting of the precinct and the new proposed voters. And we can do it like right before your normal meeting, and then they would vote on that.
Okay. I thought that's what this was.
It's like the middle step. It's like a... I know, yeah.
Work your magic.
Right, so it would be in March.
Yeah, okay, thanks. Thank you very much.
We can let you know when that date is finalized. Anything to add there, Mr. Chairman?
Nope. Just got to remember to write it down on the calendar. Just got to remember to... Well, I'm writing down the calendar.
That is an important part.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you.
Okay, we're closing the...
Right, and we're going to open the next one, the acceptance of...
Unanticipated funds. Anybody want to... Hearing done. We've got, what, one, two, three, four, five items?
We're out there getting those grants for you.
Yeah, there you go.
So it's eight, just, would you like me to just briefly go over very briefly each one? So $85,000 from the Manadonok Alliance for the Affordable Transportation for the next phase of the Swansea Senator Sidewalk Improvement Project on Sorge Crossing Road. $38,160 from State Emergency Management Fund for the generator at Fire Station 2. $30,000 from the State Department of Environmental Services to create a stormwater asset management plan. $34,328 from FEMA for 2021 declared disaster expenses that Mr. Teruso worked very hard on. And $19,359.26 from the state for a one-time contribution towards the New Hampshire Retirement System participation.
Okay, questions? Hearing done. We close off the hearing.
I'll make the motion to approve the, or accept, and expenditure of unanticipated funds.
Second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close the hearing.
Thank you.
What else we got?
Does that mean this should shut down?
Not yet.
I thought you said public hearings.
Close the public hearing, not the meeting. You got a little quick on the trigger at one of the planning board meetings. They do when they close the public hearing. I do think that... I didn't have any other business, Mr. Chairman.
We're all set on the town meeting and election preparations?
We're all prepared, ready to go. Got my suit from the dry cleaner. Got my suit from the dry cleaner and everything.
Did anybody sign up this week?
Yes, we've had some signups. I don't have the full list in front of me, but Bill has some competition for Mr. York.
So we're going to have to, Ken and I will have to do the selectmen's table problem.
That's true.
Bill will be outside with his sign.
Remember, I did not go up there. Everybody stood at the selectmen's table.
Did you have competition?
Yeah.
Oh, you should have been fired. Maybe we'll open up a censure hearing.
I had three other people.
Beat them all.
Can we do the EMS Advisory Committee now, or is that next week that Steve's going to ask?
I think Steve wants to speak to it next week. They're not meeting between now and then anyway, so.
That's table from next week?
Yes. I'm sure he'll be at Deliberate anyway, so.
How did your Sorish Crossing sidewalk plow this time with a, you ran the pickup truck down it?
Yeah, I've been running it down it all year. It's been done sunwell.
But even with that amount of snow, it was okay?
Yeah, it's a bit challenging at times because there was so much snow coming from the state plow.
Right.
I didn't know where it could go, but just plowed it frequently, and it was pretty good, and I was concerned because, as you know, the ground's not frozen, and I was worried about the new grass, but it didn't really dig anywhere. I got the boundaries down pretty good.
Now it's kind of like a bowling alley with bumpers.
Yes, that's what kind of it is with the plow, too, sort of the pickup trying to push it back.
Yeah, you're not going to want to hit those edges now.
No, but if it gets warmer, if it gets higher, the sidewalks, no blow can get in there and cuts through it pretty well. It was a little challenging at times, but it's fine. Hopefully, no more storms like that.
Spring's coming.
As I keep telling myself.
And your sidewalk plow was down anyway, right?
For a short time, yeah. One of the employees, one of the fellows who fanned that one down, we had almost everything done, but the final cleanup of it, and I figured I'd have to post something else, but it's going to be kind of moving along.
I guess Keane had the same issue.
We're actually working on right now, a cold river sidewalk plow, we're seeing people wanting to order one this year.
Hey, anything else? I'll take the motion.
Motion adjourned.
Second. Unfavorable?
Aye.